And to go back like almost 40 years later and to sort of enrich the community or to not necessarily teach, but to show the kids from the neighborhood, from the community, what is possible.
Right.
And there are many things out there in the creative field that they can pursue.
It's like you're empowering them basically, right?
I hope so.
No, I definitely think so you are. I mean, you're encouraging them and showing them a different route. I have to ask you, you know, as artists, our brains are always thinking and there's different things coming to mind.
Of course.
But we can also get stumped.
Yes.
Right? Because you're like, okay, I've done this. Now what do I do next?
Yeah.
Because you know, what keeps you inspired so that you want to continue to create? And when you do your last painting or the most recent one, you're not like, oh, this is it, I'm done. But no, I have this fire in my heart that still burns to make more.
Well, I think I've been able to garner a few fans and, you know, I think I'm inspired by bringing to them the next excitement, you know, and to violate their expectations.
Well, we look forward to you violate more of our expectations. It has been such a pleasure speaking with you today. Thank you so much for coming in.
Oh, thank you, Asha.
This has been so much fun, just learning about your work, your inspiration and how you empower people.
Thanks for having me.
So, thank you again.
Thank you.
And thank all of you for joining us. You are watching LA Currents.
It's my job to teach you the safe way to ride a bike. You should always wear a helmet, just in case you fall. Ride on the sidewalk. It's safer than the street.
Okay.
When crossing a driveway, stop your bike and look both ways.
Like this?
That's good. And obey all traffic laws.
Traffic laws?
Yep. Like stopping at stop signs and walking your bike across the street?
Boy, I'm glad you're my big brother.
I know.
Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
You with the stupid hat. Come here, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation and you can be towed.
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
In LA this week, the city of LA introduces a new $18 million tool in its fight against brush fires and it's American-made. I'm Anita Bennett and I'll have that story just ahead.
This $100,000 renovation at Lupita's Market needs healthier choices for its customers. I'm Anna Marcos and that's coming up.
And grab your swim trunks for a pool party in CD1.
Hey, everyone. I'm Umeem Rashid. Here's what's happening in LA this week. The LAFD is gearing up for peak fire season. As Anita Bennett reports, the department just added an important new tool to help
After a string of devastating brush fires in recent months, the Los Angeles Fire Department is getting its equipment in place for peak fire season. And that includes a new $18 million helicopter that just went into service.
Helicopters allow us to get ahead of the fire very quickly and to pinpoint drop 480 gallons per drop.
The new helicopter, built in Philadelphia, is one of five water-dropping choppers in the department's permanent fleet. The aircraft made its public debut in a news conference at the LAFD Air Operations Center in Van Nuys. Among those attending, several city council members and Mayor Eric Garcetti. He announced new legislation that would give law enforcement the authority to move people out of areas with heavy brush on days when the fire risk is highest.
That means that on these hot red flag days that come up during the summertime and increasingly year-round, we can now take a major step towards reducing the likelihood of encampment fires like we saw in 2017 with the Skirball Fire and last month in the Sepulveda Basin.
The ordinance is being considered by the city council's Public Safety Committee.
We have been very aggressive in developing an ordinance that will help to mitigate these future risks, working and identifying the most imminent threats when it comes to encampments so that we can protect our hillsides, protect our families and our properties for many of the Angelenos that have been exposed to these dangers.
Councilman Paul Corretts represents the area where the Skirball Fire destroyed six homes.
No matter how expensive or how humble your home, it looks about the same when it's been burned to the ground.
City leaders say now is the time to clear brush and take steps to protect your family. While fire season does last all year long, it picks up in the fall with the Santa Ana winds, but there are some things you can do to get prepared. For more information, head over to lafd.org.
In addition to its air fleet, the LAFD leases more helicopters during peak fire season. And just in time for fire season, a restored firehouse is bringing more fire personnel and services to the Wilmington community.
Today, Wilmington's Fire Station 38 to recognize the restoration of Light Force 38.
The Wilmington community deserves, deserves public safety resources. And with the addition of the Light Force 38 here in Wilmington, we're adding to our response capabilities. Therefore, we are saving lives here in Wilmington when the fire department responds.
About eight years ago, we closed this resource because of the Great Recession. But in 2017, we received a FEMA grant. Therefore, we used that grant to pay for the restoration of Light Force 38. And we're here today to celebrate that restoration. We have a lot of risks in this area associated with the Port of Los Angeles, multiple refineries, three major freeways. So this community desperately needed this resource and we're very happy to bring it back to.
We're actually bringing more fire personnel to the station. So the community has embraced us, are excited to have more first responders here in Wilmington.
It's a new program that honors victims of car crashes. The hope is to save lives by bringing awareness to drivers and pedestrians of how important it is to stay alert on the road.
I wish I wasn't standing on this street where my 16-year-old son died on October 19th, 2010. He would be 25 on his birthday on Monday. And while we cannot bring Connor back, we can protect others from losing their lives or suffering similar tragedies.
The pain and loss left by Connor's death can never be changed, but reckless driving behavior, distracted driving, and poor street design can.
Fighting for safer streets starts with remembering the victims of these preventable crashes, telling their stories, and raising awareness of the issue of traffic fatalities in Los Angeles. Over the next year, we will install 100 rainbow halos, just like this one, paying tribute to 100 lives that were lost in traffic collisions in our streets.
But how does art actually save lives? And the way that I see it is that it saves lives by creating meaningful interactions, by creating moments of contemplation and reflection. And through that, we can become conscious of our behavior. And through that, we can begin to make different choices.
Now we have a permanent memorial, a beautiful rainbow halo, which pays tributes to lives lost and raises traffic fatality awareness.
Some low-income families are getting a big relief from high rents as a new affordable housing complex opens its doors in Hollywood.
We're in East Hollywood where we just dedicated 54 units of low-income, affordable housing, working with Hollywood Community Housing Corporation here at the Coronel Apartments on Hobart, just south of Hollywood Boulevard. And this is really the way to go, especially in an area where you have historic resources. We don't have to sacrifice those. We can incorporate them in to new projects and that's how we can grow as a city.
It has been a 10-year journey to see this place and this dream fulfilled. You are seeing the folks that are in the apartments, the smiles on faces, and this opportunity being raised for people, whether they be homeless, whether they have special needs, or whether they just fall upon hard times, are served and have a place to live.
The city asked us to step in and try to stabilize this property that was really badly mismanaged and it was in terrible condition. So we did that more than 10 years ago. And then over the course of many years, the city really worked with us to get the site all put together. We go from Serrano Avenue all the way through to Hobart Boulevard, very complicated site, but the city's been a really great partner.
The Fourth Annual Downtown LA Proud Fest promotes an all-inclusive community. City officials enforce e-scooter rules, and a new crosswalk at a Hollywood elementary helps keep students safer. All this and more in City Beat.
A new signal and crosswalk at Vine and Romaine in Hollywood is making it safer for students at Vine Street Elementary. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and the LA Department of Transportation joined with students, faculty, and parents to dedicate the new installation and the new school year. The DTLA Proud Festival presents diversity, pride, and love for each other, as well as love of music and entertainment. Fearlessly authentic, the festival welcomed everyone to enjoy the party at Pershing Square.
This is just, you know, one really wonderful opportunity for people to get together at the end of summer to celebrate just, you know, being LGBTQIA+ and proud and, you know, and to be able to do it in a really safe atmosphere and environment. So that's really awesome.
In an effort to increase rider and pedestrian safety, Councilmember Paul Corretts has joined with the LAPD to create the e-scooter enforcement task force to enforce rules of scooter use. Rules include one rider per scooter and leaving scooters in positions on the sidewalk that give adequate space to pedestrians.
We're starting this task force to write tickets to people that are on public sidewalks, but also to let the public get the word out that not only is it against the law, but you will get a hefty fine.
Reverend Joe Waller of the Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church was honored with a square named for him at 52nd and Compton Avenue for his service and dedication to his community in Council District 9. Guests that were part of the celebration included Councilmember Curran Price.
This gives them a chance to recognize the achievements of an individual who has been faithful to his community, faithful to his constituents, and faithful to our city.
Can the transformation of a mom-and-pop store help improve the health of an entire community near downtown LA? Lupita's Corner Market owners says yes, as they reopen their doors. Anna Marcos pays a visit to find that health is very much a part of the menu.
A little more paint shelving and the stocking of merchandise and Lupita's Market is almost ready for business. The business of making the community healthier.
Once a year, we do select one or two small markets to become a transformation. Right now, we're trying to catch up. We are bringing in some merchandise, we're bringing in fruits.
This was Lupita's Market just over six months ago, a dark, cramped mom-and-pop store on a street corner near downtown LA where the snack du jour for kids coming in after school was often junk food. But Nusarango, her mother and family, who owned the store, wanted to change that and lead the way to healthier food choices.
A lot of our community, they find it really difficult to go to stores and travel miles away just to have either healthier food options. Having a community market that has everything that everybody needs is what we have become. It's a very passionate project for a lot of people, as it is to our family.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council, which helps stores go healthier, stepped in, awarding Lupita's Market a chance at a complete store rehab through its Healthy Neighborhood Network Market Program. Now, $100,000 in renovations later, the market is ready to be reborn.
The basic menu that's going to be affordable for the community, and they're going to have salads, we're going to have soups. The Healthy Neighborhood Market Network Program is to help small business store owners in underserved communities, specifically small market owners, to have healthy, fresh, affordable options. These are communities that are generally categorized as food deserts.
The project got a lot of help with pro bono work from the Gensler Architectural Firm and Build Group Construction.
We had this idea of farmer's market, so where you would have baskets of fruits and vegetables, and that's what we designed into the furniture in the front.
There's going to be seating out front behind the counter here. And the challenging part was the storefront walls. We had to actually tear it down.
For the kids who still expect to get their daily after-school snacks, Lupita's Market is offering curbside service during the renovation.
So the kids come even though you remind them?
Yeah, they, yeah. They told me, "Oh my God, Lupita's no more. What happened?" And I said, "No, I'm here." So I want to say to everybody, "I'm here."
Oh, they are definitely here better than ever. And bananas, oranges, tomatoes, and yogurt never looked so good on a shelf.
The official grand reopening is scheduled for mid-September. Los Angeles celebrates its 238th birthday with a nine-mile-long march in celebration. Angelenos make the journey every year in honor of the city's founding.
Today is Happy Birthday. Happy Birthday to the city of Los Angeles. We're celebrating the 238th birthday and we're celebrating here at the birthplace of Los Angeles, El Pueblo.
It's a great example of how the history of LA and even its founding is a diverse tapestry, you know, of many, many threads from many, many different cultures.
So not only is this an event that celebrates our shared history, it's also a celebration of our diversity and our inclusion.
It's an honor to be here in memory of our ancestors in the founding of what is today Los Angeles.
Do you think events like this are important?
Yes, yes, I do. I think they're important because this is part of the history of LA.
Adguata tallia nuka in the memory of our ancestors.
Tacos, fried chicken, collard greens, mac and cheese. Hungry yet? I am. That was on the menu at a recent city employee luncheon put on by Councilmember Curran Price. It was a chance for all city employees to get together and mingle over some goodies.
All the departments do an extraordinary job whenever they're called upon and just doing their duty. And so we just want to say thank you. This is a way of saying thank you. Come on in.
There we go. Whenever there's an event that highlights or honors our employees, I want to be there because they are the best. They work their guts out. They're the glue that keeps this city together.
I can tell you, the new Ninth District under the leadership of Curran D. Price is on the move. Great things are happening. We came by to celebrate with them.
To come to an event like this, you see people from Urban Works, you see people from sanitation, you see people from lock meeting, and you know, some of these people you know, some of them kind of transitioned through your department and now they have different departments. So to come right to you with all this is all great, you know, it's good.
It was all about the written word as authors, poets, artists, and book lovers came out for the annual Limerick Park Village Book Fair, which promotes reading and literacy in an entertaining and engaging way.
What's going on today is the Limerick Park Book Festival. As you can see, we exploding that myth that black people don't read. We read, okay? And we demonstrating it today. We have to make reading exciting. We free to read. People want to stay on their phones. They don't want to go outside and play video games. No, we got to destroy that behavior. We got to make them read because knowledge is power. Anything you want to find, you can find in a book. And what you got to do, you got to read.
This event is very nice. I really enjoy all the books that I'm seeing, a lot of variety. You have poetry, you have the authors out, and the children's books, and it's just a great event for the family. I would like to hopefully just, you know, meet some of the authors and get some book
I'm here to try to complete this particular piece today because I knew Nipsey and his brother, and then I'm from the neighborhood. It really touched me enough to pay tribute to him.
It was a dirt path for years, but now, a sidewalk at Fenton Charter School in Lakeview Terrace is about to get a much-needed transformation, and community members couldn't be any happier.
Today, we were conducting a groundbreaking here at the corner of Fenton and Tarabella where we are finally delivering a sidewalk adjacent to one of our most prestigious grammar schools in the area, something that's been sought after for well over 25 years.
What this project will do, will widen both Tarabella and Fenton by 20 feet on each side. We'll add a 13-foot wide sidewalk, so it'll be a much different look and much improved for motorists, for pedestrians primarily, for the students that would come here to elementary school.
So we expect that construction will commence in a couple of weeks and, you know, hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll all be, you know, we'll have a bunch of kids running on some sidewalk. A big day for the community and after all these years, you know, we came in and I got here working with the Bureau of Engineering, we're getting it done.
Do you think twice before using a public bathroom at a local park? Most of us do, including me. But city officials are hoping to flush out that experience by debuting the city's first self-cleaning toilet.
Three, two, one. This type of restroom automatically cleans itself after, we have this one set for 30 uses.
This is the first one of these in the entire city of Los Angeles.
Please press button to close at locked door.
We have 660,000 visits to our parks a week. Think of the burden on the maintenance employees of this department to maintain 1,600 bathrooms that are being used constantly.
We have to look to innovation, we have to look to technology to find solutions.
What happens here is after every 30 uses, a sanitizing agent will spray over the floor and the toilet area. That sanitizing agent will sit then for a minute, and then the water nozzles will come on and that will wash the sanitizing agent away. And then after the wash cycle, the dryers come on and push all that water to a trench drain at the front of the unit. So after this 10-minute cycle, we have a refreshed and hygienic cubicle again that smells great and is ready for use. An automated system like this realizes tremendous cost savings on maintenance. It's a cleaner, nicer bathroom to use than a conventional bathroom facility is. And it also plays music.
Thank you very, very much. 15 years we playing tennis here and we don't have a beautiful like this restroom. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
This is a city that has been known throughout its modern history as a place of innovation and creativity and doing the next big thing. And this may be a step in that direction as well.
It was fun for the whole family during a pool party and movie night at the Echo Park Pool sponsored by Councilmember Gil Estadia.
We are having family movie night today. This is the first time we hosted here at this facility, so I'm really excited that the community is here and we get to meet them. It's a free event today, so it's great for everybody to come out. It's super warm outside, so nice for them to come and float in the water, watch some I grew up doing this. I'm doing it. I'm 77 years old, I'm still doing it. I love it. It helps kids grow. Swimming is good for the mind, the body, and the soul. Come, bring your swimsuit, bring your towel, sign up for our program.
Find your favorite movie scene location during a scavenger hunt, enjoy some yoga at the beach, and take in the beauty of traditional Korean folk dance. All this and much more in Things to Do.
On your marks, get set, go! It's a movie-themed scavenger hunt in downtown. You'll get to see where some scenes from movies such as Speed, Wedding Crashers, Pretty Woman, Ghostbusters, and Beverly Hills Cop, to name a few, were filmed. The scavenger hunt also includes exploration of odd artwork, some strange sights and figures, a cryptic message, and a stop in the vibrant Grand Central Market. This event takes place on September 7th and starts at Pershing Square, 532 South Olive Street. The event starts at 2:00 PM and goes till 4:30. For more info and to RSVP, call 1-877-9-GO-HUNT. Get out that yoga mat and the beach towel and come out and enjoy a day on the beach with Thick Girl Yoga LA. The day is filled with yoga, games, and giveaways, plus breathing exercises, body awareness, and a bliss bag. The event will be held on September 7th from 12 noon to 6:00 PM at Dockweiler Beach located at 13173 West Pacific Promenade in Playa Vista. For the exact location, be sure to follow Thick Girl Yoga LA Beach Party on Facebook. The Korean Classical Music and Dance Company invite you to come see their ceremonial court and social folk dances integral to Korean culture. The ensemble presents rich, graceful, and elegant dance forms. The presentation also includes educational segments with Korean folk dancers. The dance company will be hosted by the Los Angeles Public Library Central Branch at 630 West 5th Street on September 8th from 2 to 3:00 PM. For more info, visit Eventbrite. The Secret Movie Club is added again on Saturday, September 8th. They'll be screening Mothrob vs. Godzilla as part of their Kaiju Summer Series. Bring the whole family to the historic Vista Theater at 4473 Sunset Drive in Las Feliz. Settle in with snacks and some drinks for what is sure to be a roaring night. The screening takes place on September 8th. For tickets or more info, visit Eventbrite. The city of Los Angeles and Councilwoman Nuri Martinez cordially invite all Angelenos to this year's celebration of El Grito. This free arts and music festival will be the kickoff event in recognition of Latino Heritage Month. Food trucks, silent disco, DJ dance party, and more. Don't miss out on El Grito, coming September 15th beginning at 11:00. Don't miss out on El Grito, coming September 15th beginning at 5:00 PM. For more info, contact Nuri Martinez's City Hall office at 213-473-7006. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayman Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thank you for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September 6, 2019. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, do we have quorum? Let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busqueino Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weiser Coretts, Krikorian, Lee Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez Rue, Wesson. Ten members present, Anna Quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Lee seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds next.
Madam President, Items 1 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected committee report has been posted and circulated for Item 11.
Members, are there any specials? Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Your next item?
On the continuation agenda, Item 14 is an item for which a public hearing has been
Is there a special on this item? Okay, seeing none. Go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. What's next?
And Madam President, the ordinances for Items 2, 3, and 14 will be held over to September 13th unless reconsidered today with 12 members.
Without objection, that will be the order.
And Madam President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Mr. Harris Dawson, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, everybody. And thank you, Madam Chair and members, for making space for us to do this very, very important presentation that we do every year, where we ask all of our members to wear blue or light blue in recognition of the importance of getting tested and screened for prostate cancer. Today, I'm here with a group of health experts and innovative leaders and specialists who wake up every morning trying to make a difference in the lives of men, making sure that they know that testing is available and testing is very, very necessary. September is National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and it's important that we continue to press for awareness in our communities. Every day, a new person is diagnosed and touched by the pain and hardship caused by prostate cancer. It's a disease that African-American men suffer from far more than other groups. They're the least likely to get tested and the least likely to survive once they get tested, at a rate of about 70%. So this month, we ask that you join us in honoring all those who have lost lives due to prostate cancer, and we recognize the courageous survivors who've made it their business to make sure that other people join them in the ranks of survivors. And as we do every year, I'm happy to be joined by my colleague in his great light blue tie and blue suit, our own Councilman David Rue.
Thank you, Councilman Harris Dawson. It's an honor to join you every single year, and also for your leadership on men's health. And thank you, Freddie Muse, who we're going to hear from, for your incredible work on building community among those diagnosed with prostate cancer. And thank you to all the honorees for all of your work to raise awareness and saving lives. Every 20 minutes, a man in the United States dies from prostate cancer, and one of the leading reasons is because men are not getting tested. And with every form of cancer, early detection is key, but it is crucial how important it is for prostate cancer, because early stages of prostate cancer shows no symptoms. And there are no self-tests, and making regular checkup with your doctors is crucial to detection. But most of all, despite cancer deaths declining in the United States, prostate cancer deaths are rising. In particular, there is a rise in late-stage diagnosis after the cancer has spread to other organs. Treatment can be painful and difficult after prostate cancer has advanced beyond early stages, which is why it is so crucial, and you will hear this again and again in this presentation today, to be tested early and often, and why it's so important to spread awareness about this disease. Which is why I'm so glad to be joined by the leaders from the Men's Cancer Network, as well as incredible doctors, survivors, and advocates whose work truly saves lives. And again, from the rest of the speakers, you will be hearing again and again, but it's worth repeating, get informed and get tested. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rue, and I want to immediately pass the mic to someone who's with us every year who's made sure that the City of L.A. pays attention to this issue. He's been the leader of the Men's Prostate Cancer Network, Mr. Freddie Muse.
Thank you, Councilman. What an honor it is to join you again today. I want to let everyone know that, you know, prostate cancer is the number-one cancer in the African-American communities. We are doing our utmost to get men informed and screened for this issue. You've already heard how important it is. Prostate cancer affects African-American men more so than any other ethnic group in the world. And so African-American men are less likely to get to a doctor, get screened, and take care of their health. But I cannot do this alone. I'm joined today and supported today by a group behind me, members of the Response Study, the Care2 Project, and the Corey Group of doctors. I'm also joined by Dr. Jennifer Lanahan, who is also treats prostate cancer. She's a board-certified specialist, surgeon and scientist in the field, and you will hear from her shortly. There are other groups, because we cannot do this alone. So there are other groups that are associated with us. For instance, online, there's the ProstateCancer.net organization that I proudly serve as a moderator with. You can join that group any day of the week, day or night, men and women can join this group. Join in the conversations, you might even learn a few things. So that is headed by Ms. Shana Yates, Ms. Nina Winterbottom, and Mr. Brian Green. So we also have association with Charles Drew University, UCLA, Cedar Sinai, and some others. So I'm very proud to be associated and participate with these groups and collaborate with these groups. I also want to mention one other thing. On Saturday, September 21st, we are having our annual event, and at this event, we are providing prostate cancer screenings, the blood draw only at this event on Saturday, September 21st at Bryan Temple AME Church, 2525 West Vernon Avenue. So if you would let your constituents know, men can come and get screened for this deadly disease. And with that, I think that's all the time I have.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, one more time for Mr. Freddie Muse. Keeps the issue going. As Mr. Muse said, there are many people across the country and in our city who do innovative and breakthrough work to help those who are struggling with cancer and also have breakthroughs on getting improved and more prevalent testings. Today, we're honored to provide recognition to a couple of those people. I'd like to start off by recognizing a group of professionals who have collaborated with the Men's Cancer Network to provide prevention workshops and screenings and spread cancer awareness throughout South Los Angeles. First, we want to begin by recognizing Ms. Erica Cobb, who connected the Men's Cancer Network to doctors in the field who could participate in the workshops and spread cancer awareness in underserved cities. Let's give a big round of applause to Dr. Cobb.
I'm not a doctor.
We gave you a doctorate on this in my notes, so you should embrace it.
Well, thank you.
Say a few words.
It's my pleasure to be here today, and this is a huge honor, and I just am passionate about the work that we're doing in the community, and I look forward to doing this many more years and hoping that we can raise awareness and help people get the testing that they need in a timely manner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And the next person we want to recognize, I have an editorial comment, Madam President. It should be noted that the only victims of prostate cancer are in fact men, but the advocates, we have as many women who are advocates for prevention as we do men, and so we just make a note of that. Second, I'd like to recognize Dr. Anton Bilchik for leading the Cancer Prevention Networks in South L.A., also an internal specialist in surgical oncology and a scientist. specialist in surgical oncology and a scientist who's pioneered techniques to improve staging in cancer and minimally invasive approaches to improve outcomes. He's on the Board of Directors of the California Oncology Research Institute, and is a professor of surgery and chief of the gastrointestinal research program at the John Wayne Cancer Institute, American Cancer Society, and the American College of Surgeons, and recently was listed as one of America's top surgeons. So we'd like to recognize Dr. Anton Bilchek. So he has not, he has made, not made it yet. Next, we'll move along. We want to recognize Dr. Jennifer Linehan, Linehan, who has also played an integral role in spreading the word. She is also a renowned surgeon from John Wayne Cancer Institute and serves as the section head of transnational research. Her clinical practice is focused on robotic surgery for testicular, kidney, bladder, and prostate cancer. She works vigorously, vigorously every day to combat cancer and still finds extra time to participate in awareness activities throughout South Los Angeles. Let's recognize Dr. Jennifer Linehan.
Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Jennifer Lenihan. I'm very honored to be here today. I'm a urologic oncologist, and I specialize in both diagnosing and treating prostate cancer. We do research at the John Wayne Cancer Institute, looking for new tests for prostate cancer that could help avoid having to do a biopsy, as well as specializing in tests that would help localize the sentinel lymph node. So we are working every day to help advance the treatment and care of patients with prostate cancer. But the most important thing that I get to do is through organizations like Corey, who Dr. Anton Bilchek has brought me into, as well as working with Freddie Muse at the Men's Cancer Network, because I get to go out into the community and talk to patients about what they can do to get screened. And screening is easy. It's a blood test. All you have to do it is once a year. And you are correct, African-American males do have more aggressive forms of prostate cancer. And it kills me to see another forty-year-old guy walk into my office with bone metastasis from prostate cancer. So reaching out to the community and talking to people and talking to patients and educating them is one of the most important things that I get to do. So thank you very much for your attention today. I really appreciate it.
So another big round of applause for all of our advocates. We really want to recognize and lift them up and lift up the work this month. If you, if you know a man that you think hasn't been to the doctor in a while, make sure you nudge them and, and ask them to go get tested. I think, Mr. Rue, every year, we can stand here and say that we've been tested. I can this year.
Not yet.
So, Mr. Rue.
This is my yearly reminder.
So, Mr. Rue will be getting tested as well. And now, thanks to the, the advocates, it, it's very exciting to announce, we've got, in District Fifteen, and District Eight, and District Nine, we've got nine barber shops. So you don't even have to go to the doctor now. You can go to the barber shop, tell your family you're going to get a haircut, and you can sneak and get a test done for prostate cancer at, at a, at a barber shop. And we have a list of those that we can provide. Madam Chair.
Mr. Harris Dawson, would you like us to take?
Yes.
Members that are on the queue, Mr. Sadio?
Mr. Dawson and Mr. Rue, thank you so much for doing this. This is so important. My father had prostate cancer. He was treated at the Norris Cancer Center. It's part of the USC, LAC Medical Center, and he was treated by an incredible doctor, Dr. Oscar Streeter, African-American doctor from USC. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is that while I was in the legislature, Dr. Streeter made sure that the infrastructure, in other words, the machines, the radiation, the treatment infrastructure, was the same, both at the L.A. County side and both at the private side. Obviously, access to health care is in, too often dictated by insurance and the quality of your insurance. But at the LAC/USC Center, we made sure that whether you had insurance or not, that you got the same quality of treatment, because we're able to buy the infrastructure that was necessary for, for that treatment, whether you had the insurance or not. And so I'm very proud of that. That was a result of Dr. Streeter's leadership. And so I thank all of you for doing this. It's so critical and so important. Detection is key. Early detection is, is critical, and so we're saving lives when we do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Back to you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, thank you so much. So again, we want to recognize all of our honorees. There are certificates for all of them. We'll be taking pictures in the back, but their signature program, Man Up and Get Tested for Prostate Cancer during the month of September. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Rue? Okay, Madam Clerk, there's been a request to reconsider item number six. Just go ahead and open that for, for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
There's been a request to continue this item till Tuesday, September tenth. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next presentation. Mr. Coretts, are you ready?
It's interesting that we have a lot of medically-related presentations this morning. Colleagues, I'm delighted to introduce you, for those of you who don't know, my dear friend, Richard Eastman, who is standing before us today and is a medical miracle, which I am excited to tell you about. I've known Richard for over thirty years. We go back even before I was elected to the West Hollywood City Council, and over three decades, we've worked in solidarity, as Richard has served on the L.A. County HIV and AIDS Commission, and was the Homeless Task Force Commissioner for four years, appointed by the L.A. County Board of Supervisors. We also worked together to co-found the L.A. County Medical Marijuana Task Force, and along with Senators John Vascancello's and Mark Leno, we were on the Committee to write SB four-twenty, which clarified the scope and application of Proposition two fifteen and established the medical marijuana program for California. SB four-twenty was passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor in two thousand and three. Now, twenty-five years ago, August of nineteen ninety-four, my friend Richard was diagnosed in the L.A. County AIDS ward as having only twenty-two T-cells. And honestly, I thought that was the end of him. But those of us who know Richard know he's a very determined fighter, and in nineteen ninety-five, he literally got out of a hospital bed, and with the help of internationally-known AIDS healthcare physician, the late Dr. Charles Farthing, Richard received his first dose of then-experimental-protease inhibitor medication that eventually helped save the lives of millions of individuals living with AIDS all over the globe. Richard also used what were considered experimental treatments at the time, including positive thinking and many applications of cannabis. And before the protease inhibitors, really cannabis was just about all that people had to deal with multiple symptoms, and I think his activism helped to save himself and many others. This isn't just about survival. He's lived his life in service. Richard served for four years as the Homeless Task Force AIDS Commissioner for the L.A. County HIV/AIDS Commission, which is the largest such commission in the country. He co-founded the Cannabis Buyers Club in Los Angeles in nineteen ninety-five for patients living with HIV and AIDS, cancer, glaucoma, MS, and other terminal illnesses, before the protection of Prop two fifteen came about. And today, it's my honor to stand with my friend, Richard Eastman, to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of his original diagnosis of twenty-two T-cells. He then used the pre-FDA-approved trial medicine and varieties of therapeutic medical marijuana to, twenty-five years later, achieve a currently undetectable status of eight hundred and twenty-seven T-cells. And he's been deemed to have a clean bill of health by his physician and a life expectancy potentially of many decades more. I also believe we have a short video to run from Emmy award-winning composer-producer Dan Studney.
Hi, this is Dan Studney, writer-composer of Reefer Madness the Musical. I'm on the East Coast, prepping to bring the show back for a twentieth anniversary production, but I just learned of a more important anniversary, and when I did, I wanted to send this along. I've gone and rewritten the lyrics to the theme song of Reefer Madness, and I hope you enjoy it. Lurking on the boulevard and wearing all these pins, people may be unaware of this man's epic wins. Diagnosed HIV in nineteen ninety-four, it's twenty-five years on now. May he live for many more. It's Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman. We're so glad. He is hope. He is dope. He has exercises right to try experimental treatments across the land. Even pre-FDA, he don't care what people say about the life-affirming reefer in his hand. Now, everybody sing! Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman. We're so glad. Goodbye, everybody!
So in honor of, well, actually, I just realized, I should have a speaker first. I believe it's James Warford. If I mangled your name, you can correct it.
Thank you. On behalf of West Hollywood Council member, John Heelman, I want to thank Richard for his advocacy on behalf of people impacted by HIV and AIDS. Richard has been a longtime passionate advocate for medical marijuana use and a fighter for services and treatment for people living with HIV. Congratulations, Richard. From today until Lucky Friday, September thirteenth, you can visit L.A. City Council's resolution honoring Richard Eastman on hand at the newest pop-up museum, Weed Maps Museum of Weed. Richard has a exhibit there, and there's a forty percent discount being given by the museum if you mention Richard's name. I personally would like to thank Richard as well for making medical marijuana a reality for all of us, and we look forward to sustainable and unregulated cannabis use for all people.
Now, Richard, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Distinguished City Council, new members, older members, Tom Bradley, Peggy Stevenson, Joel Wax. Forty-three years ago, I came from San Francisco to be in the motion picture industry, and I helped save the Hollywood sign in nineteen seventy-seven and seventy-eight with Mayor Tom Bradley and Alice Cooper and Hugh Hefner in the Chamber of Commerce. And then ten or fifteen years later, I got the job at Western Costume and dressed movie stars like Charlton Heston, Mickey Rooney, Roger Gabor, Denzel Washington. And then they laid me off, and I got AIDS. That was nineteen ninety-four. And I crawled up to San Francisco, my hometown, where I grew up with the Grateful Dead and Janis Joplin and the hippies. "This is the dawning of the age of Aquarius!" And I made it back to Hollywood, forty-three years ago. I've been in the same apartment for thirty-one years in the heart of Hollywood. I ran for City Council and tried to make Hollywood a city. I stood with Paul Coretts in the L.A. County Medical Marijuana Task Force when there was no one but the patients that can't be here today because they've died or they're missing in action. Too many names to mention. My friend, Bill Rosenthal, whom marijuana saved him in his final year on this council, benefited from the work of not only myself, but Dennis Perone and Brownie Mary and the L.A. and San Francisco Cannabis Buyers Club. I'm extremely honored to have immigrated from San Francisco to a little town called Hollywood forty-three years ago, in nineteen seventy-six. I was a young man of twenty-three, and as Paul said, I'm sixty-six, and I got eight hundred and twenty-seven T-cells, and I'm ready to serve again, because my doctor not only said I'm healthy enough to serve in office, but today, I've announced about a couple of months ago at the Smokin' at the White House, an event that started forty-nine years ago, which I'm producing for the thirteenth year in a row on the Fourth of July, two thousand and twenty, that I'm running for President of the United States, the first openly gay man living with AIDS, as a right-on candidate for the President of the United States. I'm not going to take too much more time, but forty-one states will allow my votes to be counted, and if Snoop Dogg decides to run with me, we're painting the White House green the next day. Thank you, Los Angeles. Thank you, Paul Coretts, and whoever signed this honor, and the memory of my friends, you know, Tom Bradley and Peggy Stevenson, and Joel Wax is alive somewhere in New York with the Andy Warhol. I wore this shirt, and Melissa Bowlen, who is here, finally, the woman that helped me, because women help Dennis and I most of the time more than men. And I don't know why, other than men are dealers and women are healers. So that other line I wanted to just say was, "This is the dawning of the age of Aquarius, the age of Aquarius, Aquarius." A shout-out to all the people that have died, that weren't able to be here to celebrate my living twenty-five years, from Newsweek and Elizabeth Taylor to President Clinton to Barack Obama. And if I am elected President of the United States, everything's going to be free, free the weed and uncorporate greed. Thank you, Paul Coretts.
Mr. Coretts.
Well, thank you, colleagues, and it is my honor to recognize one of the great characters of our time, who I am delighted survived for the extra twenty-five years and is here with us today. And so on behalf of the City Council, it is my honor to present you with a resolution signed by the entire City Council.
Wow.
Wow. Hump, hump, hooray!
Hump, hump, hooray!
Hump, hump, hooray! Hump, hump, hooray! Right on, Richard Eastman!
Free the weed and uncorporate greed.
Going to take that picture. Chapeau, bienvenue. All right. Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Thank you very much for being here, you all. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call a couple of folks who filled out cards for general public comment. If I call your name, please come up. Sergeants, if you can please remove the robe so folks come their way up to the podium. I'd appreciate that. Lauren Natoli, are you here? Lauren? Eric Previn? Mr. Previn, are you here? Kim Yergin? Kim, are you here? Come on up, Lauren. Good morning. You filled out a card for general public comment. Go ahead.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority have both acknowledged overwhelming elements to the homeless, homelessness crisis are skyrocketing rent, disinvestment into affordable housing, and stagnating working wages. It's unjust to practically banish people from our city because of economic and social structures dragging them out of housing in their own communities. The city needs to take a step toward beyond leaving it at discussion and prioritize actions to make affordable housing a reality. Thank you.
Are you, are you, what is your name? Ma'am, what's your name?
Kim Yergin.
Kim, welcome. Go ahead.
Good, good morning, Councilmember.
Good morning, Councilmembers. They say that, oh, my name is Kim Yergin with Park Mesa Heights Community Council. And they say that a picture speaks a thousand words. Respectfully, I don't know if you can do this now, but I would like you to Google 5748 Bryan Hurst. If you have a computer or a cellphone, please, please Google respectfully 5748 Bryan Hurst. This is a single-family community in the Crenshaw District, better known as the Hyde Park area. And what is happening is that there's a developer that wants to build a multi-level apartment building between two single-family homes and a single-family enclave.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Previn? Come on up. You have one minute of your general public comment.
Yeah, thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And I've note that you have no city business that involves the public today, except for the presentations. And I want to congratulate Mr. Eastman and Mr. Coretts on his run for president. I think it's the first time I've seen anybody declare a run for presidency in this hall, and it's very exciting. I wish him well, obviously. I noticed that there's some opportunity zone items in here, embedded with no opportunity for comment. You took comment from Herman and someone else on some date, possibly. There was a great New York Times piece exposing how, though they're intended to bring up people, they actually benefit the same crew. And I just think it's very sad. You should look up that article, Martinez, when you're done talking to Sharon so chipperly about I don't know what during our public testimony. That's approximately one minute. I will just simply say it's nice that virtually nobody is present. It's another nice touch. I see John Lee hiding behind Duarte. But where is everybody? Is this just not even a quorum? We're in such light mode that it's kind of embarrassing. This is a great city in America. We should have civic vibrant debate. We've got a lot of issues in our, did you see that the auditor controllers person wasn't doing thorough?
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Mr. Rue. Are you ready for your presentation, sir? You have some special guests with us this morning? I hope you're going to display your Taekwondo moves. You got any moves, Mr. Rue?
You want to move those? Good morning, colleagues and Council President. We're getting a little set up right now, getting a little ready. We are today, possibly, we should close that just in case. We are in the safest room or safest building possible today, not just because of our LAPD officers, but we have pretty much all the top-ranking Taekwondo instructors, sabonims, and black belts, so we are safe today. But good morning, colleagues, and happy Taekwondo Day. I am proud to be joined here by the best of the best in Taekwondo. We Jin Park, Director of the Korean Cultural Center, Los Angeles; Jin Seop Kim, Chairman of the California Taekwondo Committee; and Chan Young Kim, President of the Oriental Mudu Federation. But we're also here joined by Olympic gold medalist, Master Jimmy Kim. I actually remember seeing him in the Olympics on TV. Pei Young Chul Kim and Che Kyung Kim. Let's give them all a round of applause. And we are also lucky enough to be joined by so many masters and grandmasters, including Grandmaster Yong Shin, Grandmaster Jin Ki Lim, Grandmaster Cheong Hwan Jin, Grandmaster Jeong Sang Paeck, Grandmaster Herman Lopez, and the first female dojang owner in Los Angeles, Grandmaster Young Suk Kim. And of course, I want to give a special shout-out to my Taekwondo master, my Taekwondo sabonim, Grandmaster Cheong Jong Oh. Taekwondo is a martial art that teaches discipline and precision, but it is so much more than that. Taekwondo is a cultural expression. It is an important learning expression for children, experience for children. And since it was repressed in Korea during the Japanese occupation, it also became an expression of pride and resistance. Taekwondo means the way of the foot and fist, and dates back to ancient Korea. But modern Taekwondo came only after World War II. The martial arts grew across Korea, and thanks to the many people, including the many of the folks behind me today, Taekwondo also grew in the United States and across the world. Taekwondo became a demonstration sport on September 17, 1988. And in the 1988 Summer Olympics in Seoul, and in September 4, 1994, International Olympic Committee voted to include Taekwondo in the 2000 Summer Olympics in Sydney as an official sport. This day, September 4, which also happens to be Los Angeles's birthday, is now also World Taekwondo Day, an expression of Korean culture and sport that's recognized across the world. Today, the very best Taekwondo masters compete on the world stage, whether it's at the Olympics or at the Kukyuan, which is the World Taekwondo Headquarters in Korea, where the official Taekwondo governing organization was established and where Taekwondo is taught by the very best. But Taekwondo also has students here in the United States learning its lessons of discipline and focus. In this country, there are 50,000 dojangs, or Taekwondo training halls, and 357,000 Kukyuan black belts in Los Angeles alone. And in Los Angeles alone, we have over 200 dojangs and 20,000 Taekwondo students. Taekwondo is a rite of passage for Korean-American children. And I, myself, was one of those students who practiced Taekwondo growing up. The sport taught me discipline, respect, and pride in my culture. And for thousands of children across Los Angeles, it helps them keep out of trouble and focus on their goals and dreams. To celebrate the growth of Taekwondo, especially here in Los Angeles, Kukyuan and the California Taekwondo Committee are hosting the very first Los Angeles Invitational Taekwondo Championship here at the Los Angeles Convention Center. There, you can see the Kukyuan National Demonstration Team perform. And some of them are here today, and they'll give us a sneak peek in a little bit. But to speak more about this event and about this day, I want to welcome the Director of the Korean Cultural Center in Los Angeles, We Jin Park.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm We Jin Park. I'm Director of Korean Cultural Center, Los Angeles. It is my great honor to be here with you to celebrate the first Taekwondo Day in Los Angeles. Taekwondo Day was established in Korea on September 4 in 1994, when Taekwondo became an Olympic sport by the International Olympic Committee. Annually, the week of Taekwondo Day is celebrated with a big Taekwondo festival around the world. Taekwondo is the Korean national martial art. The spirit of Taekwondo is consideration for others and self-discipline. Now, Taekwondo has become a global cultural heritage, loved by tens of millions of people around the world. I'd like to thank all of the Councilmembers for making Taekwondo Day for the first time in Los Angeles. And especially, many thanks to Councilmember David Liu for introducing Taekwondo Day to the City Council. Through Taekwondo Day, I hope that Taekwondo can spread faster than before. And I hope Taekwondo will continue to be an official competing sport in the 2028 LA Olympics. My wish is for more people to learn Taekwondo and make this beautiful world a better place to live in with the spirit of Taekwondo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, a leader in this great martial art. Please welcome Jin Seop Kim, Chairman of the California Taekwondo Committee.
Hello. I would like to start by thanking David Liu. My name is Jin Seop Kim, President of California Taekwondo Committee. After 238 years since the incorporation of Los Angeles, it brings us great joy to see this day. September 6, to be a pro- proclaim Taekwondo Day, we truly believe that this is the correct step into the development of this sport in the United States of America. We are sincerely grateful for your support for David Liu. In this matter, we would like, also like it, thank you all of official gather here today alone with the LA Council General Taekwondo Grandmaster and Master for making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know some of the, there's some members who want to speak.
Yes, we do. We have one member.
But should we have the little quick presentation first?
It's your presentation, sir.
Yes, okay. If we could do, and we would like to do a quick Taekwondo demonstration. How was that, huh? If you want to see more of that, you can see it at the Convention Center. Actually, actually, I was going to join them today, but you know, there was only room for three.
Oh, come on.
So, that's how I couldn't join.
Loosen up the tie and go ahead and do something.
But if you notice, I want to say one thing about pumse, which is what they were doing. Where they started is where they end up. So, that's why, if you notice, where they, the exact spot where they began is the exact spot where they ended. But it was a great presentation on that, and I think, if there's any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Lee.
Councilman Rue, thank you so much for having us today. This is, Taekwondo, when I'm trying to decide on what activities to bring to the youth center that I volunteer at, it was, Taekwondo was one of those things that we wanted to bring, not because I'm a Korean-American and not because of the self-defense aspects of it, but because of all the different things that it teaches you, about courtesy, self-respect, discipline. And those are the same sort of messages that we are trying to teach our youth at our youth center. And I just want to thank all the people that are here today. Thank you for bringing this. And Taekwondo has always been a big part of the Korean culture, something that I'm very proud of. And just thank you so much for being here today.
Back to you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. And with that said, I'd like to present this resolution declaring September 6, 2019, as Taekwondo Day in the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you to all.
Now, you can show us your moves, Mr. Rue.
Just for the rec, just for the record, I did get to red belt. Red belt was just below black belt, but I ripped my hamstrings, so I couldn't do my black belt test.
The honorary first-time, the number 041373, the name David Liu. This is certified that the woman and the person has obtained honorary first-time in appreciation of his dedicated service and outstanding contribution to the development of Taekwondo in accordance with the Kukyuan Regulations for Promotion Test, 2019, September 3rd, the President of the Kukyuan.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the help at the table. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go back to general public comments, members. Arnold Sachs, are you here? Arnold Sachs? Robbie? Is Robbie here? Sean? If I hear, if I, if I announce your name, please come up to the podium. Are you Robbie?
My name's Robbie Davis.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
I'm a homeowner in the Hyde Park area. So, first of all, I want to say thank you for paying attention to the issues that we brought to you before, and that has now resulted in an interim control ordinance happening. However, I do want to alert you to the fact that there's just as large an issue happening within the Hyde Park District. That is the elimination of 206 rent-controlled housing units, termed Dorset Village. It does not make sense to me to have a city proposing to It does not make sense to me to have a city proposing to be wanting to house the homeless, to create homelessness, because a billionaire developer wants to raise it to the ground. So I'm hoping that your creative energy will take place, because even though the issue isn't being brought to us, we're going to be bringing it to you because of the fact that we need places to live.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Sean?
Good morning. Would you have a minute for a general public comment? Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Sean Davis. I just wanted to say thank you for the ICO. It is tremendously appreciated in our community. Major concern is not just our community alone, but the L.A. County at large. There's so many people that are running scared right now. The gang-bangers of our community no longer is the local gang-bangers, but is the gang-bangers of developers. They're coming in, tearing down our community, and putting us in distress, creating more homelessness, and increasing our rents extremely high, that's making our area unaffordable to live in. We're begging you as a whole, because there's not one area that I've gone into, from Echo Park to Hollywood, to even Compton, where they're not saying, "Help us." We're begging for help, and we don't know how to ask you guys at your level to help us, but please, help us to stop these developers from coming in and stealing our company, our community, because we don't know how to, but we're asking you, if there's any way that you at your level could help us to save our community, save our lifestyles, save our, save it for our children's inheritance, please help us at your level.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks. Hold on, Mr. Sacks, let me call a couple of more speakers up. Dorothy Cox, are you here? Dorothy? How about Dale Steiber? Go ahead, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. For the record, Arnold Sacks. That was a great presentation. It's nice to be able to see some culture that dates back 2,000, 3,000 years and is still alive and well. So yesterday's newspaper, this is L.A.'s culture. He was homeless and died on the streets. That's part of it. But the other part of it is, it's an epidemic. So who takes care of epidemics? Well, the county has a health department. And in the county health department, L.A. Care is signed up to be insured to provide homeless services, to provide homeless care, not services, to provide medical treatment. We never hear any stories about L.A. Care. Why not? Where are they to help the people that are mentally ill? They need hospital beds. And if you give them hospital beds, L.A. Care pays for the service. Why doesn't the city take care, look into doing something about that? Why is it?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Next speaker, Dorothy Cox. Followed by Dale Steiber and Carol Derby, are you here? Good morning.
Good morning. Dorothy Cox here. First of all, I'd just like to thank Councilman Rue. My grandson is a black belt at 10, at 10 years old in Taekwondo. So I thank the Korean community for bringing it to the United States. Secondly, I want to thank our councilperson, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson, and Councilman Koress for sponsoring City Council File Number 190939 and 19-0940. I appreciate what you've done so far, but there's still work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Dale.
Yes, hi, I'm Dale Steiber, and I'm following up one of my neighbors to thank the council for adopting the motions 19039, 19040. Thanks, Councilman Koress, and Harris Dawson, and the council. We hope this is a good step forward for all of our communities. There's a lot more work to be done, so we appreciate the direction you're all taking.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carol.
Hello. Thank you very much. And thank, thank you, Marquise and Michael Bond, both of you. I used to live in your district, and now I live over here in South L.A., doing the Park Mesa Heights area. I moved there because it was a nice little neighborhood. House is 1927, 1929. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood with nice neighbors. And, you know, my only complaint is we don't have a lot of stores. We need stores. The developers, if they want to help us, they can help us by asking us what we want, not telling us what they think we need. And we, you know, there's places they can go to talk to us, they can have us, you know, a town hall. There's things we do need in our neighborhood, like more grocery stores, locally owned. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of potential to help the people that live in our neighborhood to start their own homes, I mean, their own businesses, so they can help themselves and pull themselves up. And thank you for what you have done, but there's a lot more to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker for general public comment this morning is Antonia Ramirez. Are you here, Ms. Ramirez? So your general public comment, ma'am? You have one minute.
Thank you very much. Thank you, LAPD officers and pilots, for taking on the Taekwondo against crime, serving and protecting victims of crime and women, and homeless women. Thank you very much. While our city attorney, Mike Fuhr, and Joe Buscaino, and Herb Weston are too busy getting plastered on my types on a nightly basis and not doing their city official jobs, this is the hell we go through. And again, in my culture, my Mexican culture, we have respect, honor, pride, and no corruption. That is why I'm aggressive, I'm a hardass, oh, I forgot, Bob Blumenthal, he's another one, who basically throws me out because his wife is black, and because I am going, I'm taking on the white trash junkies, the chungo Latino wetbacks and gang-bangers, and the Skid Row niggers, who are in La Placita, and the Music Center, Grand Park, and throughout downtown L.A., coming in from Skid Row, trashing, hurting us, attacking us, beating us, and robbing us, and tearing all our clothes. And these niggers, gang-bangers, and wetbacks harass us, attack us, yet Bob Blumenthal throws-
Your time is up, Ms. Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Ms. Ramirez, I need you to stop speaking. Ms. Sergeant, can you please show Ms. Ramirez her seat? Okay, that concludes general public comment, Madam Clerk. So we're going to go ahead and close that for today. There is a special one.
Yes, Madam President, and special one has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, that is going to take two votes. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to speak on the findings?
The findings have been circulated. I believe you can just vote on the findings now.
Mr. Kukorian?
I'm seeing this for the first time right now. I'd like to be able to at least look at it.
I understand. Mr. Kukorian, did you want to speak on this item?
No, but we have a public speaker.
I understand, but I have your, it looks like you requested to speak.
Not sure how that happens, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take public comment at this time on special one. Mr. Eric Previn? Mr. Previn, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Typically, would you read in what this is about, or are we supposed to just glean it from what you posted quickly? You're not going to read, do any read-in? Okay. That's bad, because it's hard, even as Kukorian was saying, it's hard to process it so quickly. But this is a house, and they need to provide more time for Council and Cultural Heritage Commission to consider the merits of the request. I'm not sure where the house is. It's 100 Delphine in L.A. 90077. This falls beneath any kind of standard. I don't know, you know, you just whip these things off out of the air, and today, it looks like, and obviously, they're trying to do something good, and we all want to support that, I assume. I don't know. Nobody knows. So it's just BS. It's very bad practice, and I think the people, you know, lose an opportunity. Here, we have been in our neighborhood, asking our own Councilman Kukorian to try to explore designating the Weddington Golf and Tennis property, because Fred Weddington always envisioned it as a public amenity for people all over, well, this is a cultural heritage designation matter, so we're looking forward to future cultural heritage designation matters. But this one, this is, this falls beneath the standard.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you again, for the record, Arnold Sacks. And since it's not listed on the computer about what this item is, and it never was read in, it's fascinating to hear people come into the council chambers now and talk about how they need help with affordable housing, and how they need other things. Nobody invests in the middle class anymore. Nobody invests in the low class. It's all about billionaire boy club. The city can do some things. They can raise MICLA funds, they give them to developers for developing. But developers will develop in L.A. and California anyway, because it's a location. People want to come to California. And then when they get here, they find out how screwed up it is. You need to have people invest in the middle class again. You need to have city funds go into those locations so that people can improve their life, instead of waiting for a developer who's got a billion dollars to make a billion two. Doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. There are no more speakers on this item, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this item. Mr. Koress, you wish to speak on this item, sir?
Yeah, just for the record, this house located at 100 Delphine in Los Angeles was designed by world-class architect Paul Williams. The home is a notable work of a master architect who has significantly impacted the city of Los Angeles and its residents. And it very recently came to our attention that this building owner has applied to demolish the property, and immediate action is needed to initiate consideration by the council and the Cultural Heritage Commission to designate the property before a demo permit is issued by Building and Safety. And we've circulated a special one, and I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Koress. So we have two votes before us on this item, members. We're going to first vote on the findings. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now before us is this motion, so we can go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. What's before us, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? I have a quick one. Someone asked Mr. Rue to please take the chair.
So whenever you're ready.
I have a quick announcement. Actually, I know, I said, I don't want to make you cry, because you're going to make me cry, but I want all of us to say farewell to Arcelia Arce, who will be leaving our office after six years. She doesn't want to do this, and she doesn't want me to embarrass her, but I'm going to do it anyways. So it's, you know, Arcelia came to my office in 2013 after I had just gotten elected, and she has such a tremendous worth ethic. Not only is she has a tremendous worth ethic, she's one of the smartest women that I know, and incredibly compassionate. And Arcelia has been our policy director since 2013, and she spearheaded a lot of my women initiatives when we first got elected, and when we were the only women, women here on the council. If it wasn't for her, we would not have been able to launch our Ready for Women Fellowship, which is a paid internship to create that pipeline for women to run for office, and hopefully replace me one day, and Monica one day, when we decide to leave. And Arcelia was at the helm of this fellowship. She's also been incredibly instrumental in planning our International Women's Day, you know, Women Equality Day, Family Paid Leave, and all the initiatives that we started in the office have all been spearheaded by this amazing woman. She's not only my, my chief transportation expert on staff, and staffs me on transportation, but she also staffed me for a very short amount of time on budget. But she was amazing. She also staffs housing and wrecking parks. She's pretty much an expert in all these fields. Arcelia is going to be leaving us to go to Southern California Edison, which is a really good job for her. She's going to be making more money than I can be able to pay her, so I do not blame her for that. But I just wanted to take a few minutes just to say thank you. I think she's been an incredible, incredible asset to my office. She's been an incredible mentor to the countless women that we've been able to bring in through this fellowship, that she continues to mentor and support. And although she's going to move on to do incredible, incredible things at Edison and beyond, so I want to say thank you to Arcelia for being such an amazing asset to my office, an amazing colleague, and everything you've done to be able to move the needle forward in Council District Six. So please give her a big round of applause. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and all of us, we want to congratulate Arcelia on her tremendous opportunity with Edison, and wish her well. And like I say, with all my babies and all my friends, I want them all to one day grow up and just be amazing. I know you are. And someday, they leave, they all leave eventually, they all move on to bigger and better things. But nevertheless, we want to show our appreciation for their contributions that they've made to the residents of Los Angeles. So thank you very much, members. Congratulations.
Should we embarrass her further? Does she want to say a few words? Thank you. Any other announcements on Kukorian's side? Announcements on Councilman Sadio's side? Any announcements on Councilmember Sadio's side? Members, if we could all rise for adjournments? To my left, Councilman Koress's side, any adjournments? Seeing none on my, oh, Councilman Sadio? Adjournment, go ahead.
Yes, colleagues, if I may, it's with great trepidation and hesitation that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Daniel Reese, born June 15th, 1933. When you think of that time period, it was the depths of the Great Depression. He was born in Barstow, California. He was born, the second child of five children, to Manuel Reese and Anita Reese. He lost his father as a toddler, and was raised by, became his father, Emmanuel Mesa for the rest of his life. Emmanuel Mesa left us at the age of 96 in 1996. Needless to say, that life in Barstow was a challenging life during the Depression, and it was a difficult time for the family, and they worked many jobs throughout the High Desert and throughout the Coachella Valley. But nonetheless, he became a very great athlete, and was a really smart man. He was a great athlete at Barstow High School. He was all CIF in a series of sports, basketball, football, baseball, track. He played golf. He played a whole range of sports, and he was really stellar in those sports, such that he was recruited by the University of California at Santa Barbara, the University of California L.A., UCLA, Red Sanders. He chose to go to UCSB, but the war, the Korean War, interrupted that time period, and so he joined the Army and was stationed in Fairbanks, Alaska. Later, he came back and continued his efforts in sports in college, playing at Antelope Valley College, and also at Chafee. And so it's from there he left college, married, had his kids, and spent, moved to Los Angeles. He was one of my mother's four brothers. He was a very diligent man, coming out of those poor families. Requires a certain discipline to be successful, and he was an extremely self-disciplined man, very detailed, focused, and was a great pleasure to be around. He was at my house frequently, as all my uncles lived with us at some point in their lives. It was the nature of our family, and remains that. I want to thank him for his great friendship as an uncle, always kind to me and my brothers. This is on behalf of my family. He taught us sports in the way that others couldn't because of his great talent. He was also a great coach, and he taught me fundamentals. I'm not that big or that fast, but he taught me fundamentals when other kids didn't know them, and so I was a success in Pop Warner football. And as you know, I had a very mediocre career as a high school quarterback. But all of those are attributes to him. More important than that, though, is the leadership that you get from sports, and he taught us that. He was an extremely healthy man. Looked, he walked around here looking like Jack LaLanne. And then, without notice, his, while we all have a date, he got sick just a mere week ago, had an infection, thought it was pneumonia complications, and he abruptly passed away on Monday. He will be sorely missed, and I want to ask you to close in his memory. My thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. On- On Krikorian's side, any adjournments? Councilman Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the City Council adjourn this meeting in memory of great singer-songwriter of Armenian music, legendary talent, Adis Harmandian, who passed away on September 1st. Mr. Harmandian was much beloved by Armenians throughout the world. He was born in Beirut in 1945 and had a career that spanned over a half a century, producing and releasing more than 30 albums and 400 songs. He was the recipient of many international recognitions, including the Saint Mesrop Mashtot's Medal by His Holiness Katolikosar Adam I in 2005. Mr. Harmandian was the sort of singer that really created the soundtrack of people's lives around the world, Armenians, particularly in the Armenian diaspora in Lebanon and here in the United States. And he will be sorely missed. It was a loss that the entire community grieves over and mourns. His funeral service will take place tomorrow, Saturday, September 7th, at 3:00 PM at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills Hall of Liberty. On behalf of all of us, I'd like to express the city's deepest condolences to his children, his extended family, his colleagues, his friends, and of course, all of his fans who've been inspired and moved by his music and his contributions to global culture for over a half century. May he rest in peace.
Any other adjournments? Well, I have a final adjournment. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in the honor of Jan Ruff O'Hearn, and I'm joined by many community members and friends who knew her. Jan was a survivor, an advocate, and a hero for victims of sexual slavery everywhere. Jan was born in 1923 in the Dutch East Indies, a former colony of the Dutch Empire. War broke out during her childhood, and during the Japanese occupation of the Dutch East Indies, Jan and thousands of other Dutch women were forced into prisoner-of-war camps. Jan became one of hundreds of thousands of comfort women during World War II, who were forced into sexual slavery by the Japanese Imperial Army. During her time in these camps, Jan was abused, denied her freedom and contact with her family. But Jan survived on hope and on the support of other women who are also being victimized. Following the war and Jan's liberation, Jan stayed silent for many years. Like many comfort women, she lived in shame. And as a result, the world nearly forgot what happened to these women. But in 1992, Jan decided to speak out and share her story, publishing a memoir titled 50 Years of Silence. Jan's courage to speak out made her a hero to many of the survivors who have lived, who are living in silence. She testified before Congress, worked with the Human Rights Commission, and was recognized by Australia's Prime Minister for her leadership in fighting to honor her fellow victims. Jan's story is a profile in courage, resilience, and strength. It is also an example of how widespread, how widespread the comfort woman system was. Hundreds of thousands of women from across Asia, including Dutch women like Jan, were forced into bondage and sexual slavery during the war. The women suffered unspeakable trauma and exhibited incredible courage in sharing their truth. Their history should never be forgotten, and their work to recognize the honor of comfort woman victims should not die in vain. Jan Ruff O'Hearn died surrounded by loved ones on August 19th of this year. She is survived by her daughters Eileen and Carol. She will be missed, and she will be remembered. May she rest in peace. Thank you. And with that, members, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.